Good afternoon and welcome. This is the May 20th, 2024 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask everyone remain calm and exit to the doors, through the doors to your right. Proceed down to the right and down the stairs. If that is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator. And let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask everyone please silence your cell phones. Public comments will be heard after each work session item. And if you plan to speak, please fill out a form on the table near the door that you came in and give it to the city clerk. Following this work session, council will convene in a special meeting followed by a special budget session. Public comments will be heard after the special meeting, but not during or after the budget session. At this time, we'll have a presentation by Mayor Randy Taylor.
I have a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and the city of Salisbury is committed to ensuring the safety and security of its citizens. And whereas the members of the city of Salisbury Emergency Medical Services are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to delmas medicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other of out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the city of Salisbury Emergency Medical Service, whether a career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specific specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by Designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Randolph J. Taylor, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 19th to the 25th, 24 Emergency Medical Services Week.
Actually, I actually took notes just because I know. Yeah, thank you very much, council mayor, for this. This is the 50th anniversary of EMS Week. It's honoring our past and forging our future. I thought it was pretty neat. I did look back a little bit, and EMS really got started in the 60s. There was a white paper that talked about accidental injuries are the biggest cause for people, you know, to lose their life in the first half of their lifetime. And they actually said in that, if somebody is seriously wounded, the chances of survival would be better in the zone of combat than on an average city street. So we have gone from there to now people go into cardiac arrest in the field and actually walk out of the hospital at the end of the day. And it's, you know, we've got such a regimented educational program, continuing education. We've got our SWIFT team, the nurse practitioners. I mean, it's, it's all wraparound kind of thing now. So, you know, just again, thank you for continued support of our prehospital folks. And yeah, thank you.
So we echo those same thoughts. Thank you all for keeping us safe and happy 50 years. Not to you, Chris, but for in appreciation. So this time, actually, I think we'll call you back up for a budget amendment for fuel with the fire department. So whomever from fire.
Yeah, too many Chris's.
Yeah. Chris Obarski, okay, I have twillio in here. Yeah.
When you're ready.
Good afternoon.
A little professional development.
Just push the button and then when it's ready, you'll, you're all good to go.
Hey there. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing today? Good? Good. Thank you for letting me spend some time with you today for this budget amendment I have before you. For the fire department, we're requesting approval of a budget amendment for $20,000 to cover a shortfall in our gasoline account from projected, from the U.S. Energy and so forth in the consulting, energy consulting program. This is due to increased fuel cost and as well as increased call volume for our fire EMS through the city and the county. Just want to have any questions or?
Yeah, just so one question for myself. One, so we were fairly certain this would get you through until the end of the budget, the fiscal year. And then two, did we put this into, I know we have already done budget, but did we look at this projection for next year's budgeted numbers?
Well, the projection isn't. I had it pressed, I don't know what happened. The projection isn't necessarily done by us. That's done through finance.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so a moment.
We'll double check.
Perfect. That answers that. Well, good. Any other questions from council?
None.
None? That's, that's it? So we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, great. So you will have some gas then. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll call the Housing and Community Development Director, Mayor Boda, to discuss short-term rentals. Good afternoon, Mr. Boda.
Good afternoon. Button? All right, there we go. Good afternoon, council. As we discussed a couple of months ago, we were looking at a solution for short-term rentals. And so what you have before you is some legislation we have drafted. Couple of things, you know, our key here is life safety. And this is to ensure that people that visit our city who are renting these properties, that there are smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, lead paint inspections, other similar requirements. All those are state requirements that we monitor within our current program with standard rentals. So the other, so the key points on here is that this will allow for both owner-occupied residents and non-owner-occupied resident owners to operate their property as a short-term rental. Looking across the state, some towns ban short-term rentals, which is, which will be illegal soon. In the state of Maryland, state has said that you can't ban them, but they can implement programs to register and inspect short-term rentals. And this, and this places it on the same field as a regular rental, kind of creates a fairness between the two, the two industries. So what we've done is we've clearly defined a short-term rental and a standard rental. We've changed in the code to rental owner's license, which kind of reflects what we, we give to the people who apply. We've also, one of the key things is to allow for electronic transmission of invoices and license. So currently, everything is mailed in the programs. They will create their own account. They will manage their account. And then they have the option to continue to receive it by paper or by mail, or they can receive it electronically in the software where they can download their license and everything. So kind of modernizing the process. We've set a maximum stay guideline for 30 days. So one rental cannot exceed 30 days because in our definition, a short-term rental is 30 days or less. A standard rental is 31 days or more, which is in line with the state of Maryland, what they have defined. Some towns and some cities do different things based on what they have going on. You know, Annapolis is a little different because they have, it's a state capital. So sometimes you have people renting a place for three months, you know, if they're working in the general assembly and stuff. But, you know, that's Annapolis, this is Salisbury. And to, you know, later on, you'll be discussing the landlord unit registration fees and the fee schedule. This also sets inspection requirements. And one of the key things that is standard in these types of, in this type of legislation is requiring short-term rentals to have liability insurance policies of at least $1 million. So at this point, I'll take any questions anyone has.
What, what city or cities do we look at in comparison to draft this legislation?
We looked at Gaithersburg, Oxford, Annapolis, Frederick. There was, there's probably about 10 to 12 cities that we honed in on. Ours is, is mostly, is basically we, we used Gaithersburg as a model. They, they had a really good system in place. They had a really good piece of legislation. Kind of felt like that kind of mirrored more to what we wanted to do. So, so that was kind of, and so, you know, a lot of times when you have a municipality that has gone through it, you know, they, they've done a lot of the heavy lifting. And then, of course, you know, working with legal, you know, they, they went through their piece of it to make sure we were in compliance with state law and everything.
Okay. Okay. I'll save, I know that we received an email. I think that person is here to make public comments. I'll save a couple of the questions and let that person make comments. Any other questions from council? Yes.
Mr. Boda, does this by definition cover the Airbnbs that people are renting throughout the city?
Yes. That, that's what this is. Yeah, short-term.
This is pretty much what initiated this.
Airbnb is a company. So there's, so but the, the standard term, I guess, is short-term rental.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jackson's also on Zoom if she wanted to comment at all. I just want to make sure we don't forget about her because she's not up on the screen.
No.
I think, I was just gonna say, one of the reasons why some of, some of the municipalities were trying to ban them was because they were taking business from traditional hotels but not paying commiserate fees. So these, these short-term rental plans have been a way of, you know, allowing them to, you know, participate and not fall foul of the law, so shall we say so.
Okay. And mayor, have you had a chance to look at this legislation? Have you, have you green lighted this? Okay, good. Okay. So since we have another question now, I want to make sure I address any public comments. I know we do have one from Aaron, please excuse the last name.
Fylive.
Fylive, yes. If you want to go up to the podium, please.
It actually, my question would both like to come up. That's comfortable.
Okay, if you want to go one at a time, then we'll, yep, perfect.
I'm Erin Fylive. I just saw, just a few days ago, this was on the agenda. We are property owners and short-term rental owners in the community. So obviously, we're very much vested in this. I was concerned with a few of the, or more had questions and perhaps was requesting more clarification on some of the items that were mentioned in the agenda. Specifically, actually, do you mind handing my paper? Thank you. And I did send an email. It's very long and I don't need to read the whole thing. I just wanted to kind of bring up a few things. The biggest thing is defining what a short-term rental is. And I kind of feel that the council has lumped short-term rentals in the same category as long-term rentals. And requiring the same legislation for that, I feel is a little bit of a stretch, not a stretch maybe, but like, it's not exactly, they're a completely different animal than long-term rentals. So I understand completely the need for safety and inspections and registration for short-term rentals, but the extent of the inspections perhaps is something that we could have additional discussions about. If we're defining a short-term rental as less than 30 days, then I don't see where we need a lead-based inspection would be like one of the big ones. Since the state of Maryland doesn't require a lead-based inspection if you're staying for less than 30 days. So that was one of the big ones that was on there. And I don't see in here that we discuss fees, but perhaps you're aware Airbnb already collects a fee. So the city should be getting a fee from Airbnb and VRBO. And if they're not, then they need to be talking to Airbnb because they're legally supposed to be sending some sort of fee to the city. They take 6% from our commissions for that. The other thing I wanted to speak in regards to was liability insurance. Airbnb and VRBO, and these, I'm speaking about these companies because they are the main players in the industry. They already require and cover all their people that host through them with a million-dollar liability insurance. And so my question would be, could we have additional clarification as to this million-dollar policy that's being requested? Would this be in addition to what's already being covered through Airbnb and VRBO that we would have to carry the expense of? Or would we be covered already with the Airbnb/VRBO policy that they cover for us? I guess my biggest thing is if we could, I really would like to have the opportunity, I'd be very grateful for the opportunity to have additional discussions, including short-term rental owners in the community, because it is a very different animal from long-term rentals. And most people have not run these rentals, just don't have the same, it's a different, it's a different beast. And so I don't know if we could table this, the vote for accepting all these that we've had for their discussions or, that would be something that I would request. Okay, I think that was pretty much it. Everything's in the email, really long, I don't need to read it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Of course, Mr. And just while you're going up, this, this comes from the HCD department. So I'll forward the email that you, we don't draft this legislation, it comes from the department, so I'll forward that, of course.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Fylive. And it's my beautiful wife there. So a couple of things to kind of, again, like my wife said, Airbnb and all the short-term rentals are definitely different in a way that we provide everything for the guests. And most of the time, you are making the property really, really nice, really, really, because you want the people to come to you. So Airbnb and short-term rentals, you want to have them in the city. And most of the time, you want to see them because it shows that the city is alive, it's vibrant, it brings people in. I always say, always, and Airbnb is very central, they stay in hotels unless I have to stay in a hotel. And the, the money comes from the Airbnb and commission is being paid out. We're gonna pay, we're paying it out, not sure where it's going to. As far as the city making the, as far as the cities that we compare to, I want to make sure we're comparing ourselves apples to apples. What city we look at, Salisbury people coming over here, they're not coming over here for any major attractions, meaning there's great things over here, but most people coming over here for family, SU is a big thing, and, you know, work-related. And another thing I want to make sure we, maybe addressing is what is, what is to do with people who come over here for three months for work? Are we gonna let them just be, what are we doing with them? So you say it's short-term rental, but maybe people coming over here for an office, doctors or the nurses, three, four months, are we gonna tell them that you can't do a short-term? You have to do a whole month, a year lease? Not fair. And again, so the Airbnb is really important to have in a community, the properties itself. And we already paying the taxes a lot when we purchase it and purchase the, all the supplies goes into it. Because it's literally, you're buying all the furniture, you're buying everything, supplies, you're making people work, you're providing people with cleaning opportunities, with handyman opportunities, and you grow in the area because you have to have great property to attract the good visitors. If you don't have a good property, you won't make it and it will go to a different place. This is my biggest thing is just also, again, to compare our city to cities, to compare it to apples to apples. And as far as the liability insurance, I'm not sure if any other businesses required to have a liability insurance that we require them to have. Like if, if I buy a property, nobody tells me what liability I have to have. Obviously, I'm using a big, I'm using Airbnb or VRBO, they're providing that liability for me. But I don't think the government has anywhere to say what liability I need to have and how much I need to have it, because eventually it falls on us. And, you know, yes, you think about safety, but I'm not sure where is, where is it if there is a precedent for that anywhere else in any other businesses or any other real estate investments. And this is the biggest thing. And again, we are here for Salisbury. We've been living in this, in this town. We want to continue growing it. So we only want it for the best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lynn Bratton.
It's a wonderful day. It's sunny outside. I'm Lynn Bratton. I live on South Boulevard. I'm going to take a little different approach to this. I know how good some of the Airbnbs are. I, I've, I've seen them, I've walked in them, I've visited them, and they are beautiful. And I would move in tomorrow, honestly. I mean, they're like cute as a button, most of them. But my concern is, in this legislation, it is in the same area as the other registrations are located for rentals. At what point will the rest of us be held to the same standards of proving to you who my insurance carrier is and how much my insurance is? That to me is a relationship that I have with my insurance company to protect my own interest in my own properties. And I don't feel that the, the city should have the right to look at whether I use this company or that company or that company, or whether I have a million or 3 million. I don't believe that's somebody's business. That's my business. And I don't think that's the business of a government entity. The second piece I have in here that I'm concerned about, and I'll say that for the Airbnb as well, I don't think that's your business to ask that question. But again, I see it flipping. At some point, once, once the doors open, the opportunities present themselves and it will become a rental policy as opposed to just a short-term rental policy. The other piece is the statement that says you have to keep detailed records as to who's living here and how much they're paying, and when they come and when they go. And I understand that that's business, that is still their business, and the IRS can check the business. But is that the business of the city either? What are they, what they're charging, how long somebody is staying, and who it is? That person may be here for some reasons that they are not, you know, that's not a lot, you'd have to subpoena to get that information. Why is that becoming something that is a requirement blanket that they have to present it upon any investigation by any city inspector? You've just got to produce your notebook with who moved in and who, might be a next-door neighbor that's hanging out there and trying to get away with something. You never know. That's not somebody else's business. That's between the landlord, the property owner, and the renter. And I don't think it's, it's suitable for the city to get there. And I see some of these possibly, again, flowing over into the rental industry in general. The concern about the liability insurance, I think, is important. I think the lead paint thing, if you look at the state legislation, it says upon turnout. So if you re-rent to somebody every two weeks, do you have to have a new lead paint inspection certificate? That can be extremely labor-intensive and extraordinarily expensive if it's not a lead-free property. So I think there's, there's wiggle room here, I think that's necessary. I think we need to keep track of what we've got going on. I think we definitely need to go after the 6% payback if they're not giving it to the city. By golly, you get it. Because it is, it is a lodging payment. And for those reasons, I'd like to see this go back to work session, some, a little more conversation, perhaps bring in some of the people that are involved. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Robert Taylor. And just to provide clarity, this is the work session that it's first being presented as. So this is where we get all the kinks.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. I'm not a landlord, I'm not a tenant, but I am a libertarian. And in that vein, I would like to know, I got a little late, I didn't hear Mr. Boda's introduction. Is this feel-good legislation or is it really addressing an actual problem? Because if it's not, I would say probably it should be tables rather than go-to-work session. And just as an aside, I grew up not too far from the People's Republic of Gaithersburg, and there's no other place I would less like to emulate, well, maybe Glenn Burney. But, you know, just because Gaithersburg does something is no reason why we should. But more to the point, it seems to me that if there's no problem here, why can't these short-term rentals be just like it treated, licensed, just like any other landlord does? Abide by the same rules? Why, why do there need to be all these other special rules? I haven't heard any reason for it. There are some things, just the general drafting, for example, the liability insurance, it doesn't say whether it's public liability, it doesn't say liability to whom. Does this mean that if some tenant goes out and gets drunk at a bar and gets into a fight and hurts somebody, that, is that liability that's to be covered? Or is it just liability that occurs on the property? Or what is it? It's poorly drafted, so that's rule number two, maybe, to at least take it to a work session, if not can it. But realistically, is there a problem here? Have the police said, oh boy, these people are coming in on these short-term rentals, man, they're raising hell? Why do we need this? Anybody want to speak? Mr. Boda's sitting here.
If you want to.
I mean, you know, I mean, I'd like to know. I mean, don't you all want to know? Good night.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize that this is the work session. So this is where we get all the kinks. It's been mentioned twice. This is the work session. This is where we ask the questions, this is where we decide to either move it forward or table it for another time. So, Mr. Boda, I want to put you on the spot. If you want to sift through, if you want to come back with, with those answers, but I know there's some that maybe you can, you can answer briefly. But if not, I'll leave it up to your comfortability with answering any of the questions that were presented.
Sure, we'll, we'll look into.
Can you push the button?
We'll discuss with legal.
I'll get with legal on the liability insurance. If, if what is provided through the platform, I think that should be sufficient if the platform's providing it. If the platform's not providing it, then that's something we can, we can discuss. The 6% tax, so that would be the county hotel tax. So if that, if they are in fact collecting that, then we get 16.7% of that for the zoo. So that would be if, if they are in fact collecting that. We'll look into the lead paint. We can, we can look into that. But I know, I know at minimum, if it's a rental, it has to have a carbon monoxide detector and a smoke detector. That is state law. So, and it does not define, it just says rental, it doesn't define between the two, although the state has defined short-term rental as 31 days or less, I believe is what their, what their definition is.
Okay. Councilwoman Gregory?
I just want to highlight it for, for folks who wonder where this came from. This is something that has been asked for specifically by the one B&amp;B owner that is in the city, which is in my district in Newtown. The, the previous owner had multiple times asked us to do something because she was being held to a standard of the hotel rules as a regular B&amp;B and saw all of these Airbnbs being, cropping up and, and operating and closing and operating and closing. But, you know, she was being forced to, to go through the registration process and everything. And she did not see it as fair that there were other rentals that were part-time that, that were not being held to that standard, so.
One question with the, similar to what Councilwoman Gregory was asking. Is the fact that, are the current short-term rentals that you are aware of, whether Airbnb or any of the others, do they have to register and have a license with you? Because would that, wouldn't that kind of alleviate all of the issues that you're, they brought up about insurance and other lead paint, things, things like that? If the short-term rentals just have to register and have a license, then wouldn't that cover the basis for the questions that have been brought up?
Yeah. Well, currently, they do not register.
Okay.
They, we will, and that's what this is, is creating that process for short-term rentals. What we define as a rental owner license is, is whether they are a short-term rental unit or a, a standard rental unit, they would still get a rental owner's license, which, and then they would register each unit that they have. So, but it's done under a different, we're separating because it is a little bit different. It falls closer to, you know, using your home as a hotel or providing lodging like a hotel does in your home. So it's, it is a bit different than a standard rental. Because sometimes a landlord may have, have a renter in their property, one, two, sometimes 15, 20 years. So it's a whole different, it's, they are different, but there are some basic things that still apply, whether it's a short-term rental or a standard rental.
I'm just wondering if you can't roll it all together. So in other words, these specific guidelines would apply to any rental? And to me, coming back to having a license and a registration might address that without you having to go through all the hoops for defining each thing.
Sure. I mean, that's something we can circle back with legal on, on that. But it's just, once they get into and they, and it's, it's possibly likely the state may incur some more definitions over the next years of regulations or. over the next years of regulations, or they may, they may pass legislation regarding it. But as it gets closer to that short term rental, when you get in, if you own a hotel in this city, and you're registering, you're coming in for your hotel license, the city does have the right to ask for your, your records, your rent roll, basically. So a short term rental is kind of in that, in that realm. It's like a quasi, you know, short term lodging thing, you know, where, you know, some do, some places do allow longer time periods, but the only concern when you get past these 30 days into the, you start renting something for months, your, your, your other issue is if you have a person who is a short term renter, then your, if you issue a, say it doesn't pass inspection, or an issue comes up with the property, we can vacate that property within 48 hours. If it's a standard rental, we have a longer period of time to vacate that property. The other issue you get into between standard and short term is if the property owner needs the person to get out, well, they have a much, it's much easier for them if there's legislation that backs up that it's, hey, you need to get out if you're a short term renter. Once you get into the longer period where somebody hasn't paid their rent, that goes more into the eviction process. So it's, that's a longer process. So that's, that's the other piece that this would help.
Thank you.
April has some questions.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, I heard Michelle said that one of her constituents had made complaints, but have we had many other complaints other than that one constituent?
We, we do get complaints about short term rentals on occasion. We had one about a month and a half ago, we got a report, or about a month, about a month and a half, about a month ago, where someone had rented, done a short term rental in one of our neighborhoods, and it turned in, and it was actually a party for high school kids with alcohol. Now, again, that situation is not ours, we received this complaint like the next day, which at the point the individual complained, probably should have complained to the police department, not us. So that's one, we have had a few, about, about a couple of them, so, but that, that's was the most recent one.
And how many short term rentals or Airbnbs do we have, or Bed and Breakfastes do we have here?
Short term rentals, the current estimate is we have between 100 and 150 in the city, and that was a scrub by the company with the software. Airbnbs, I believe we have one, two, one or two?
They, they refer through ABCD, they don't through our department.
You mean B and Bs, right?
A regular Airbnb, like the one over in Newtown?
A B and B, Bed and Breakfast.
Or Bed and Breakfast.
Yes, sir.
I, I, myself, and I'm going to be perfectly honest, it's nothing, it's just that I, I think we should table this and have further discussion, I just do. I think we need to bring the people who are the short term renters, and the, I guess, the long term renters, as you're saying, because you have two different sectors, and I think the long term is, is a, you can, is it up to a year, 30 days or more, or longer?
Anything over 31.
A long term would be 31 days or longer.
And over, so, that would be, would that be considered as a, I can't think what I want to say, but if we got the Airbnbs and the Bed and Breakfastes in the short terms, 31 and over is a long term?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So, how do you distinguish that? I mean, how do you?
Typically, a long term rental, someone will go to a landlord and have a contract for six months or a year for a lease. A, a short term rental, typically they, they go onto a website and.
Okay.
And, you know, the same way you would on Expedia to, to reserve a hotel, they, just people list their homes where people can reserve their home for a weekend. People do pools, people do their backyard where you, they rent their backyard out for $25 a night, and you can pop a tent.
Right.
So there's, there's, there's a lot of different, it's not just their homes that people are renting, but we're, we're focusing on, on the homes.
So I want to make sure we're not getting too.
We're not getting out of, DeShawn, just, can I finish what I'm getting ready to say? Could, could, don't we already have something in place for long term?
Correct.
Okay, already in place for long term? Other than what you're speaking about today, Mayor.
Correct, yes, we have, we have legislation and a process already in place with long term rentals, but this, because there is a difference between, there are some differences between the two, even though there are similarities, that's why we are adding some clarifying language into the existing chapter.
Just a couple other comments real quick, if I may. As we went through, and we'll have it later on in our budget session, part of our goal is to always find alternate revenue sources. It's either you tax the people who are here, you find other revenue sources. Typically, if you have an opportunity through tourism to generate additional revenue, the people coming here, spending their money here helps you offset some of your recurring costs, so Airbnbs is a real opportunity to increase our revenue stream. We budgeted a net revenue of $75,000 for this process, so, so we consider doing this or not doing it, that is something we've budgeted. We have to decide if we want to leave that money on the table if that's where we think that we can accomplish that additional revenue.
Yep. I think you're correct about the lead paint requirement at the state level, that, that also applies, I think, to, to rooming houses, that rooming houses are excluded because they're weekly, considered weekly, even though they, they're longer term in general. So I think we probably would be remiss in trying to require that requirement. As it relates to the insurance, I think possibly if they apply for the applicant, or, you know, for the license, perhaps they just, they sign an affidavit that says they're providing insurance, whether it's to their provider of Airbnb or it's on, on their own, that might, rather than track, tracking it as a, as a separate document relative to.
Correct, it would be checking that they have liability insurance. The only thing we're required to collect would be the lead paint certificate from the state, but that's something that we can, that's just an annual thing.
But I don't think that's required for a short term rental, is what I'm trying to say. I think legislatively, that's not the case. And then the final thing I, I would say is that, you know, the whole reason behind this is to try and, you know, put some structure and some safety and, you know, into the, into the short term rental space that may be running afoul, you know what I mean? And to your point, I think it's fair, like to Michelle, I mean, for people to compete, whether it's a mainline hotel or a B and B, to compete with somebody that's kind of unregulated is a little unfair to them, so I think that would be, you know, a good, a good thing.
Yeah, and I think a key thing is a lot of them, a lot of people might not even recognize that, you know, when you, if, if it's a rental, you got, you need a carbon monoxide detector.
Yeah.
If you have a fireplace, you need to have a carbon monoxide detector within 25 feet of that, and you have to have it down within the bedroom, so.
And I was going to say, one more final thing was, in terms of this, I think the original concept was to try and collect some sort of percentage of the total revenue of, you know, whatever the product, and that's the challenge, I think, you know, in a regular hotel, I'm not sure, they, they don't require them to report an annual, they just said in what they rent, right? He's kind of, kind of like the IRS, you trust what they said.
There's a registration process on the hotels, that's another thing to discuss, because we know that this summer, we will probably, my department will probably receive 50 to 100 complaints about some of the hotels in our city.
Really?
And we've, we receive them regularly, but because of some of the tournaments coming in, and there's no, I mean, you know, I think the only, the health department may inspect them, but we do get a lot of complaints about hotels that we'll have some cases on. There, I'm not going to name them, but there's, there's a couple of the regular offenders.
Sure. Yeah, I was just trying to say, in terms of making it burdensome as it relates to reporting, I think that's probably what I want to, if we can sort of standard fee, and that, I don't know where that gets us, but, I don't know, so, I don't know what the projections look like, so, thanks.
So it sounds like we have some homework to do, so we'll, we'll keep this off, homework, and, and you have to confer with legal, but I think.
Just want to bring it back on the third, you guys want to table it for a little longer? I just want to know, so we can just prepare ourselves. If you don't, not sure yet, we can do this offline, talk more.
Yeah. Two weeks. Council, what's your, what's your feeling with this?
I think it needs to be fine tuned, and pieces that have been mentioned here need to be considered before we move forward.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I agree. I, I'd like to see this go through, but I want us to get it right instead of having to go back and fix it, so let's, let's continue to work on it. As far as timeline, like, how, how long do we think it would take to get some of these points incorporated into it?
One of the things I was mentioning, and it's a good one, if we want to get additional feedback from people, whether we, over the next couple of weeks, mine for that information, or solicit it, either way, or invite people to come, be part of a conversation, so we could move this to like the 17th of June and just ask for some additional information, see what that does, so we can incorporate into some further discussions. Two weeks may be kind of quick, we may not make a lot of progress in all the areas, so I'd hate to do this three times.
Yes, if we can move it to the 17th, that would be preferred. Councilwoman Jackson, is that, is that okay with you?
It's fine, it's fine.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll see you back. Thank you.